Good evening. I'd like to open the Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 Air Planning Board meeting. The first item is to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Seconded in.
Okay. Any discussion? Danny, do I need to discuss Stratton Hill before we get there or just do it when we get there?
We'll do it when we get there.
Okay, great. So, hearing no discussion, all in favor of the agenda?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous. Our first item is 201, 205 West Main Street. I believe we need a... Do we need an opening?
Move to...
No, we don't even need that. It's already continued. If the applicant or the representative applicant would like to approach the table?
I use this chair?
Certainly may.
All right. Good evening, Board members. As you know, my name's Tom Gibbons and I represent DMG Investment LLC regarding their project at 201 to 205 West Main Street here in Air. With me tonight, Keon Hamel, Drew Gavin, and Darryl Philippi, all of whom you're familiar with. I wanted to summarize where we are with the public hearing. As the Board will recall, the public hearing for the approval of site plan and the stormwater management permit were opened on July 11th. The public hearing for August 8th was continued because there was only three members available. At the August 22nd, 2003 meeting, we presented further on the site plan approval and the stormwater management, and the public hearing on the aquifer protection overlay district special permit was opened. On August 31st, we have the site visit, and the public hearing is thereafter been continued to tonight. On September 20th of 2023, the ZBA did grant us the special permit for the construction of the floodplain overlay district. Remember, that was a discussion of an additional special permit that we needed. It is in the appeal period, but it was granted by the Board. So realizing that this is the first Form-Based Code project that came before the... has come before the Board, we understand that this project is going to take a couple more meetings. In fact, I think we all agree that there'd be one dedicated meeting for our parking reduction request.
I have to challenge you on that. I'm not sure that we ever did come to that agreement, but please continue.
Okay. As the Board knows, we have submitted a number of supplemental response packages, and there's had been communications from Danny Ruiz, Charlie Schultz, and Town Council. So there's two issues that are crucial to this project from our perspective. First is our request for a waiver of the unit sizes for some of the units under 750 square feet, and second is our request for an affordable unit requirement of 1 in 7. As these two issues are so crucial to this project and the viability of the project, and it's going to determine whether continuing permany makes sense, our goal tonight is to get the Board to vote on those two issues. There's been much discussion, not only by the Board, but also by Charlie Schultz and the Town Council, as to whether the Board has the authority to modify the unit size requirements. I believe we're all in agreement at this point.
I think we agreed that we do have the authority to modify.
And that's what I was going to say. I think at this point, we're all in agreement. There was email communication from Charlie and Town Council since our last public hearing in relation to that. And again, I think we're all in agreement that you do have the authority under 10.3.2C. Now, the authority to grant the reduction in unit sizes intertwined with the request for granting the density bonus of 1 in 7 under the inclusionary housing bylaw. So I'd request that we first discuss the unit size reduction. If that's okay with the Board?
Please continue.
So the proposed project consists of 170 units, 21 units of studios, 125 one-bedroom, and 24 two-bedroom units. All of the two-bedroom units range in size from 973 square feet to 1,167 square feet. 28 of the 125 one-bedroom units exceed the 750-square-foot requirement. So our request for a reduction in unit size applies to 21 studio units and 97 one-bedroom units. The 21 studio units range in size from 534 square feet to 665 square feet. The 97 one-bedroom units range from 667 square feet and above, obviously up to 750, because anything over 750 or 750 and over is compliant. So I realize that a reduction in unit size is fully within the discretion of this Board. In making your decision, I ask that you carefully consider if the units as proposed provide a habitable space. So habitable is defined as a space suitable to live in. We believe that the unit sizes, sizes that we proposed, do provide a habitable space. So we believe they're habitable for many reasons, as set forth in our supplemental filings that we've made, particularly number one, there are many existing developments in Air that have units under the 750-square-foot requirement. If you refer to the supplemental that we had submitted, affordable units and unit sizes, I think everybody has a copy of that?
Mm-hmm.
If we turn to page 24?
Those we gave that at the last meeting.
Yes.
We had that at the last meeting. We didn't... We don't have that for copy.
I do have electronic version. If you'd like to plug it in, it makes sense.
If we could, I think it'd be helpful. I'm sure you've all looked at it, but...
I'm not sure that it's really necessary, but if you feel strongly about it, you can... I'm certainly not going to stop you from doing it. I'm not sure how much it's really going to inform the conversation, though.
Well, but all the Board has seen it, right?
Yes.
Okay. So again, there's many, many developments in town with units under 750 square feet. The state of Massachusetts' multifamily new construction design requirements and guideline published on August of 2018, which we talked about in previous meetings, sets a target size of studio units at 500 square feet and one-bedroom units at 600 square feet. Our studio and one-bedroom units exceed these sizes. Now, the Massachusetts guideline publication states, quote, "The units much larger than these targets will be questioned in terms of excess cost." The most recently permitted project in town at 65 Fitchburg Road has some units under 750 square feet. So none of these arguments are meant to dismiss the Air bylaw by any means, but are meant to support the fact that the units smaller than 750 square feet can't provide a perfectly habitable space. Now intertwined with the unit size reduction is the request for affordable unit count at a 1 in 7 basis, which is the bonus under section 10.3.2. So it's Charlie Schultz's opinion and Town Council's opinion that in order for the Board to consider the bonus request, the applicant must show a, quote, "dimensionally compliant project." Now although I believe that a dimensionally compliant project is based on a calculation that involves a division of the total square foot of a parcel of land by the, quote, "minimum lot area required in the applicable zoning district," as described in section 3.5.8, the Form-Based Code does not have a minimum lot requirement, so I think the calculation is inapplicable. And I think that's just the basis of the bylaw that exists, a new code, and with that, we all have to abide by what's in the code. However, what we did submit was a calculation of the number of affordable units required on a 1 in 5 basis without zoning board of appeal approval and the planning board relief that we're requesting tonight. So without the ZBA relief or the relief we're requesting tonight...
I know I have it. We can't find it.
So the unit count... So if all of the units are at least 750 square feet in a three-story project, on a 1 in 5 basis, we would be required to provide 21 affordable units. With the ZBA relief for the fourth floor and with the relief of unit size in the bonus request of 25 that we're asking for, we'd be able to provide 25 affordable units, so an increase of four units. So as section 10.3.2C states, quote, "The planning board shall have the authority to modify the dimensional and density requirements that apply to the development in order to accommodate the additional units," end quote. So we respectfully ask the Board to use its authority in discretion to allow for 21 studio units and 97 one-bedroom units to be less than 750 square feet but equal to or greater than 534 square feet and an affordable ratio of 1 in 7, which will allow us to provide 25 affordable units. Without the relief that we're requesting, there's a good chance that this project will never be built, and all the work and all the time and the vision in creating the Form-Based Code, you know, will be lost. This is a long permitting process. It's a long construction process. If this project doesn't go forward, who knows when somebody else will come in? Who knows how long that will take? And, you know, the benefits of the Form-Based Code will not be realized on West Main Street. So I'd ask you to look at it the way I presented it. Another way I'd ask you to consider it is that without the relief, we're really talking about zero affordable units. With the relief, we're talking about 25 affordable units.
I appreciate that. Before I open up, Danny, did you want to make an overview comment before I ask for comments or from my peers and colleagues on the Board?
No, I think we can open it up to the Board or to any other town.
Okay. So I will... I just want to check everyone, my colleagues here. You guys want to say anything before I open it up?
Open it up to who, Charlie?
Yeah.
Why Charlie go and then we can go.
Charlie, did you want to make a comment?
If you don't mind.
I don't mind at all.
Oh.
Do you want to pull a chair? No, just if you could pull your chair up, Charlie.
I don't care if you sit there. Thank you. I had a bunch to say, but I forgot most of it since Tom started. Anyhow, so I just read the new letter that was sent to Danny, and I'm just going to make a couple of comments on that first, because I just got it a little while ago.
What was it? Like which new letter?
It was a letter you sent to Danny. And it talks about the Form-Based Code is new. It is new, and it is new, but the Form-Based Code is only a zone, and the Form-Based Code is just dimensional requirements. What we're talking about here is our 750-square-foot and also inclusionary housing. Inclusionary housing can go in any zone in town, so it's not like you can intertwine these two things and say that because it's Form-Based Code, we have to look at other parts that will let this slide in. Inclusionary housing is allowed in any zone that allows multifamily use. That's the first comment. The second comment is, we're not... As a town, we're not here. We want development, and we want it done right, but we need to follow our own bylaws, which 6.3 says it needs to be 750-square-foot minimum. The reason why that needs to be is because we can't have an accurate account of anything. We can't have an accurate account of how many units that they can base their affordable units on. We can't have an accurate count of how many parking spaces that they're going to require without having a base number. We know, we all agree that you guys have the... You can waive and modify anything you want. But, I mean...
Not anything we want.
If you want.
I've got a lot of...
And no, I'm sorry.
I just...
But this is... But you can't... You can't start modifying and wavering things that don't come from a set point or a set number, and that's why we have a bylaw that says 750. I agree that all of their research may be right on the unit sizes and this and that, but we have a standing bylaw that they have to conform to. To just give you a quick example, if I purchased a lot next door and I came into the planning board and I said, "I'm going to build a 55,000-square-foot building, 5,000 commercial, 50,000 up above, but to make it financially feasible, I want 100 units." And then after I do my calculations for inclusionary housing, it's 120... I get 20 more, as an example. So now my square foot sizes are down to 416 square foot per uniting, if you take them one for one. That just doesn't make any sense. There's no common sense behind it. You have to have a number to start with. Otherwise, anybody can come into the town and just say, "I want to use this number to start with." We have a bylaw that says it's 750-square-foot, and I'm adamant that that needs to be met for calculations.
If I may, but we have done that, Charlie.
Yeah, the table.
We've given you the number of units.
I've never seen anything...
750-square-feet.
I've never seen it.
It just came out, what, Friday?
It was in the email. It's a chart. It's not a plan.
Are you saying that we need a separate plan? An architectural plan?
You have to prove it.
Well, all right, so we have.
That's close.
You need a plan to show that each unit is 750 square feet, and then you can develop how many inclusionary houses you need, how many you get.
Where in the... I mean, look, the goal is to know what the basis is, and I'm saying we know what the basis is, even though I think that, you know, the bylaw doesn't provide it, but we've done that. We've done what you and Town Council have requested, the number of units that could be put in that, on that development.
How do I tell off of this?
Yeah.
I have builders come in to me with plans, and if they say this is a... Going to be a 10,000-square-foot house, and I'm going to give you this much of a fee, I need a plan to calculate out if he's... If what he's put in front of me...
The building envelope and anybody who... So the building envelope hasn't changed, right? It's square footage. So how many units can you get on second and third?
It all depends. How big are your mechanical rooms? How big are your hallways? Do you have an elevator? That all depends. Without a plan to look at, I can't determine.
Hold on there. Everyone, please, through the Board, Board Chair, please.
Anyhow, those are my comments, Mr. Chair. I haven't seen this. I personally, when I get plans in front of me, I need to check to make sure that they're not adding hallway space into those areas, boiler rooms, this is out, a tabal space. It's inside the walls. It's not outside the walls either. It's conditioned space. And without seeing that, when someone comes in for a building permit application, I can't do a zoning review. I can't do anything unless I have the proper information, and this just doesn't do it for me.
Two things, if I may. So with all due respect, Charlie, the plan does not change. You know, the hallways and the elevators don't change. So what we did was we said if we had to combine the existing units, the 170 units, to have at least 750 square feet, well, how many units can you get? So that shouldn't require a new plan, because it's simply a math problem. And I'd say that not...
Yeah, but you have to prove a math problem. You can't just say x equals y.
Well, the Board has the plan. The Board has the plan that shows the hallways, that shows the utility rooms, that shows everything else, and the plan that we have shows us the unit sizes with what we requested. Because the town has asked that we show it at 750 square feet, we combine those. It doesn't change the hallways. It doesn't change utilities.
You have a layout that shows, I'm just going to see, 75 by wide by 10-foot-long apartment that's 750 feet, laid out in blocks, all down the hallways with no hallways involved that we can check.
Because what we've done is combined the units. Right. Combine the units that we've already proposed to make them compliant, and how many units can we get? Drew, is it something you could explain better than I am?
If I could just... So what we did...
We got it.
I understand what you're saying you're doing. I'm saying I'm not trust... Not that I don't trust you. I don't trust anyone until I see it in paper. It's in black and white. I don't do a zoning review on that.
So what I propose is this. We have two issues. I know they're related, but I want to take them one at a time, because we can end up in just spirals and going over and over. That's okay. No, no problem at all. So what I'd like to focus on first is the waiver for the unit size. Now, I just want to suggest to the applicant here that I want to proceed carefully. If we move this to a vote, and it's prejudicial to you, and that is, we decline, that could affect your ability to either go to the ZBA or even town meeting. If there's... If on the record formally, the Board has voted, no, that could be an issue. There is an interim step that has been suggested. We take a vote to see, does this Board have an appetite to waive the dimensional requirements for the units? And then you have... That way, we can give you a vote without a formal determination that gives you a little more liberty down the road.
I think you want to clarify that a little more?
I think if we go directly to vote, suppose there's a motion says, "Will we waive the unit size consideration?" Just waive it. Just put that right out there. And it turns out, you don't get enough sufficient... You don't get the three votes you need for yes. That makes... That might make it more difficult to you, should you wish to turn to the ZBA or present a town meeting and make your case, because everyone in town would know that the planning board made a vote and declined. The alternative is that we can say, I can have a more general, less formal vote that says, "Do we even want to exercise our authority or discretion to waive the unit count?" In that way, we've never... Whatever that is, we haven't voted no per se on the dimensional requirement, and so it's less... It leaves something open for you, is my point.
I've got a further comment, too.
Please do.
So I have another suggestion that's in line with what the Chairman has said, and you know, most of us agree with the fact... I'm on the Affordable Housing Committee. We all want more of the affordable housing units. We all want the inclusionary zoning. I worked on a lot of that language. But one of the problems we've come into is the 750, which we're all looking at right now. And Jonathan, I think, partially explained that we might not want to put handcuff you people for the project, but leave some options open. One of the problems that we're having with, I believe, I'm speaking for myself, one of the problems I'm having, and I think it's a general thought, is that the scope of the change is so large in comparison to the project. We're not talking about 10% of the units or something. We're talking about like 50, 60% of the units or more that...
69%.
69% of the units that you're asking us to provide a waiver on for the size requirement. That is a more than a small request for us to use our authority. My suggestion is going to be, and I'm going to recommend that the Board discuss or vote on this, that we make a motion that we understand we have the authority, but we decline to use the authority at this point in time. The issue to me is so large that using the authority to overcome the zoning requirement, the potential issue before the Board of Appeals, the any issues that you may have going forward, I'd rather reserve my authority for a smaller project or a smaller requirement than saying 69% of the units have to be, you know, overcome this problem. I think the benefit to me is that we understand we have the authority, but I... My position on this is that we would not exercise the authority on this project, and therefore, it's up to the applicant to decide how they want to take the next step. That's my opinion.
I just, in all frankness, I want to put my cards on the table and say, "I concur with Mr. Diskin." That's my attitude as well.
So believe me, I... You know me. You guys know me. I respect the position you're in and the difficulty you're having, but what I would say is that, you know, the bylaw, we have to abide by the bylaw, right? Some... I'm trying to think of some bylaws that may require that you can't get a variance over a certain percentage, and I can't off the top of my head, but there are bylaws, and Charlie can probably agree with this, that there are some bylaws that may limit the percentage of either a ZBA's authority or maybe a planning board to a certain percentage. But this bylaw doesn't say that, and so I respectfully would say that, you know, the Board has the authority. The bylaw doesn't limit your authority, and I would ask that you consider the request in terms of, well, what's the reason behind it? I mean, the town, through town meeting, has granted you the authority to make the decision, right? And so I would think that you would base it on the fact that these unit sizes just are not livable. And if you did, I mean, I would disagree with you, but if you did tonight, you said, "Look, I don't think they're livable." Well, that's your discretion. But to say that we can't do it because it's the number of units that you're asking to be reduced, it doesn't comport with whether they're livable or not.
I don't think that... I just don't buy that argument. I'm sorry.
You're misconstruing the argument here.
And I'd like to rephrase. It's not that... I know that I can, but I won't. It's that I am not willing. I am not willing to effectively use the Board as an instrument to rewrite bylaw. I'm just not... I will not go there.
And can I ask, it's because you think it's too large. It's too large of a request.
Absolutely.
And again, respectfully, I mean, isn't that arbitrary and capricious? Because it's a decision. But this decision should be made based on that you think there's some problem with it, not just that we can, but we won't.
I do think there's a problem, but there's too many units over 700 and under 700, over under 750 square feet, which is a requirement of the bylaw. I think that's a problem.
Absolutely. That's a requirement. I absolutely agree with you.
Well, then, there's no argument.
But a lot of times, the ZBA, you know, you might be in front of a ZBA, and they say, "Well, you don't meet the bylaw." Well, of course, we don't, because we're in front of the ZBA. We don't meet the bylaw on the 750, and we're before you with the authority. So you're acting like the ZBA. You have the authority to waive it. But whether we ask for five or whether we ask for 10, it doesn't impact the livability, right? So the decision shouldn't be, "I'm just not going to... I'm just not going to exercise my authority," because I think that's a dereliction of the Board's duty under the bylaw.
I don't agree with you.
I'm not saying this... I'm just legally saying it, right?
You can say whatever you want legally, but I disagree.
So the issue should be, any one unit under 750 is not livable, and that's the problem with...
No. I don't see anywhere in our bylaw where it says it has to be about livability. There's nothing in that section that you keep reference, which is 10.3.2C, has nothing to do about livability.
Well, absolutely, right? And it's within the discretion of the Board, but the Board should say it's not livable.
Why?
Well, because what other rationale... What other reason would there be?
They just gave you two very, very good reasons.
Well, that's because, you know, the opinion is that we should not exercise our authority. Doesn't... We're not even going to consider whether it...
We considered everything before we came tonight. We have considered hundreds of things, believe me. For you to say that we haven't considered anything is... Even to insinuate that is a mistake.
No. What I'm saying is that, and again, I'm not being flippant with the Board. I've been around a long time. I've been on the Board, and I don't mean, and if I come across that way, then I apologize, but I'm looking at this as an attorney, as the requirement of the bylaw. We can only abide by what's written in the bylaw, right? We can't assume that other things are there. And so what I'm saying is that the Board should look at it as, there's a problem with the request, not that we don't want to do it because there's too many requests, not that maybe somewhere down the road, the town meeting might change this requirement, because right now, we're before you tonight, asking to have you reduce the requirements for these number of units. And if the Board says no, it should be some reason other than, we're just not going to do it.
That's why it's a discretion. This is not a by right issue. This is discretionary issue. You're asking us to exercise discretion. This is not a by right. If this were a by right case, I'd say you're on solid ground, but you're not. This is not by right. This, you're asking us to exercise a discretion that we're saying, we don't think this is the appropriate use of our power.
But I think the discretion is your right to come to a conclusion that it's not a livable unit, that it's too small to have anybody live in that space. That's the discretion. The, you know, the courts are... I can't say, "I think it is, so I'm going to overrule it." It's your discretion to come to the conclusion that it's too small, regardless of what...
I don't agree with you, Tom. There was a conclusion of a previous town meeting and a conclusion of someone who ever wrote the zoning that already said it was 750. So we don't have to conclude anything. It's already been concluded for us right there in black and white, that it's a 750-square-foot requirement. So we know that's already been concluded. All we... We're saying, what I'm saying is, we understand the sentence. In fact, I don't even agree that that sentence applies to unit size. I think the sentence actually applies to dimensional requirements of the site and not... Because you pointed out eloquently that it's tied into Table 6.2, which is only dimensions of the land and not the unit size, and there's nothing in here that says anything about unit size. The only thing in the zoning that mentions unit size is the fact that it's got to be a unit size, a dwelling unit size of a minimum of 750 square feet. No other reference anywhere to the unit size.
Right.
So we are taking a step, even as a Board, to make an assumption that the dimensional requirement here refers to potentially a unit size. It may not even have anything to do with the unit size.
But you mean that is in relation to the affordable unit count?
Anything. It doesn't mention unit size here at all. You've eloquently pointed out that most of the dimensional requirements that are listed in 6.2, they're all dimensional requirements on the land.
Right, and that's why
They're not dimensional requirements on the, so we can't even cross, we, it's a stretch for the planning board to even take the step that this paragraph even applies. This is only me interpreting it the way I interpret it, you can interpret it the way you interpret.
So you mean, I'm sorry, but you mean that the dimension, so the 750 should not come into play on the 1 to 4, 1 to 7?
The 750 comes into play on everything in town, in every district, applies to every district.
It's a dimensional density requirement, and that's why
Dimensional, it's a unit, dwelling unit size requirement. It's not a dimensional requirement, it's a dwelling unit size requirement. The dimensional requirements could even refer to setback requirements, percentage of land use on the building, all those things that have to do with dimensions on the land. But we don't care, I, I don't want to go down that
No, I know, but
I'm saying, what I'm saying basically is that, in my belief, and it's up to the rest of the board, I don't want to use my authority now on this particular issue, I think the issue, that particular request oversizes the authority that I want to use right now. On top of that, it is a problem, the 750 is a huge problem, it should be smaller, I agree with you, but we can't do it now because we don't, we're not the town meeting. And when, you know, but that's, that's another issue, that we can settle in the future, the size itself. And I'd rather have the town meeting do it, I'd rather have the planning board review it, and I'd rather go through all the steps to make a decision now that might set, you can say you won't set a precedent, every issue's on its own, but as soon as the next project comes along on West Main Street, this has been voted at less than 750, the next applicant's going to say, "Well, you voted the last one at 750." So do this one, you know, under 750 as well. We need to establish the right sequence. I 100% agree the number's wrong, should be smaller, but I can't do it because of the way it reads in, in the bylaws. There's just too much going on.
Thank you. Ken, is it, you
I'm done.
I'd like to acknowledge Nathan, please.
This section, 10.3.2C, is where we get the 1 and 5 ruling or authority to put in affordable units, and then it goes to basically 2 and 7.
1 and 7.
1 and 7.
1, 1 affordable and 7, but the, the size increases to a, you went from 5 units to 7, that's a multiple of 7. In order to fit, so now you've got 2 more units that, that used to fit, you used to fit in 5, and you're adding 2. So you need, so those 2 units got to squeeze in to those other, or 5 fit before. Somewhere on the order, depending upon how much you shrink the, those 750 square foot units, it could be, now, basically, 4 out of 7 units need to all get compressed to fit into the same footprint. That's 57%. Now, it's a, that's 57%, moving every unit by a small amount, right? Not moving every unit by a large amount. So I, I really think that a, a plan, is let me, let me go back to the, the phrase that really jumped out at me in 3.2C, 10, 10.3.2C, is, the word is normally, right? I think that's what this whole discussion, for me, hinges on, a development that would normally be allowed. And I think that's what Charlie's presenting, is that, let's see, a development that would normally allow so many units, then do the increase. But I think that, I think that the board should be willing to move, now, again, it depends on how much we're compressing those extra units, but a lot of them could compress a little, so the percentage could be high, right? It could be 60% that get, that get waived, or it could be 30%, depending upon how many of them and how far they get compressed. But I would, I'd, I would, you have to take, you have to take the percentage in context with the delta from 750 down to some smaller number, right? So the smaller that delta is, the more percentages are going to get waived, the larger that delta is, the smaller percentage.
Thank you, Nathan. Charlie?
So I understand what Nathan's speaking about, but if you go back to the example I used as building a 50,000 square foot residential and just came in here with an arbitrary number of 500, and then I added 20 more, they would all shrink evenly to 416, I think .67 each. And that's okay, but you have to have that base, it's not okay, that's smart, but, it's just an example, but you need that base number
Yes.
to calculate everything off.
I agree.
And that base number is 750 per our zoning bylaw, not what makes it a financially feasible project, what's good for the developer, this is what, in my opinion, the town voted on, and this needs to be adhered to.
But if I may
I know what you're saying, they could shrink more.
Comment to what you said, because also, to the applicant's advantage, normally be allowed, now, how are we going to interpret normally? Is normally what was in the bylaw or what the ZBA approved? So the ZBA approved 4 stories. So I think there can be an argument that normal now for your site is 4 stories. So what does 4 stories give us?
That's not, I, I have to disagree, that's a variance, that's not normal. If it was normal, it would be by right, that's a variance, that's a different animal, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think the, the ZBA changed, and so that's, that's a debate, right? Is it normal on your site?
I'm not here to debate, though.
But I think this is, it's worth us debating with the applicant. If the normal condition for your project is 4 stories, and what does that, what does that yield? And once we have that number, that's where I'm, I'm with you, Charlie, once we have a number, then we can see how far we're waiving from that number, if we elect to do that.
I want to ask, yes, I want to acknowledge some, Jeff, please.
I just want to ask, because I'm fascinated by Nathan. Thank you. I think I followed your, I think I followed your logic as closely as possible. I'm going to ask a question, because your last statement made me think about something. It is not normal for 4-story building in that area, I agree with you it is a variance. However, and what you're saying is, with the fourth floor variance, 750, 750 square foot number of units, what would the building
Correct.
What would, what would the building, number of units?
Okay.
Because we're, we're looking at, so to that way of thinking, this is an apples and oranges chart. Because this is 3 stories, this is 4 stories.
Yes. And I have the same issue with Charlie on that chart, is that I don't know what the approximate
I'm asking for clarity on what you said, and I, I think we have it, thank you.
I think I, I'd like to add a comment to that, so. We already have clarity. They just showed us what 4 stories equals, right there.
I understand, I just, in following Mr. King's logic, I want
I'm going to follow his logic.
Yeah.
They already did it. They showed us what 4 stories would be, and how many units would, it would be, they've already told us, it's 118 units. They did all the work already, they shrank their apartments to the size they wanted. They did everything. They developed a plan, they spent a couple of hundred thousand dollars at least on these plans and on the engineering and whatever the case might be. And they developed a plan that they believe is the right plan, and they showed it to us, and they've showed it to the ZBA and everybody else. That's all done. They've already calculated it down, and they come up with a percentage, while just us doing the math in reverse. So there's, there's nothing left to do. It's just 118 units that are under 750 square feet. There's no other way to do it. Unless they change every unit to a different, it's all going to come out the same, no matter how many times they do it. If they leave those studios the same, and those one bedrooms the same. Otherwise, it just gets worse. They're going to be fewer units and, but they've got it at 4 stories, right there in the table.
Thank you. I was just asking a question for clarity.
I think that's, I think it's there.
Yep.
Okay. Chair recognizes Tom?
Yeah. So, and I'm not beating a dead horse, I understand you guys' position, and, but I'm trying to do my job. And so, Section 10.3.2C makes a distinction between district dimensional and density requirements, right? It talks about district dimensional and density requirements, as opposed to, in the last sentence, the board has the authority to modify the dimensional and density requirements that apply to the development. Didn't say district dimensional.
You want to finish that sentence?
Sure. You mean, so the planning board shall have the authority to modify the dimensional and density requirements that apply to the development in order to accommodate the additional units. The development can happen in any district, so there's a distinction between district dimensional and density requirements that are in our, our schedule of the table, and regular dimensional requirements. And that's true under the, you know, that's clear under the, under section, where is it, 6? So, you know, minimum floor area dwelling unit, that, that's a dimensional requirement, but it's not a district requirement, it, it applies throughout, so, so that's
Wait a second, what, what's, what did you say was the district requirement?
District requirement is, is the minimum square footage of a lot in our table, but the Form Base Code does not have a minimum lot size, right? So, so then, it doesn't have a minimum, it has
He's funky, though.
So, to Nathan's question about what is normal, so Section 10.3.2C says, for example, in a development that would normally be allowed to have 10 units under the district dimensional and density requirements to additional, so let's take 100,000 square foot lot that we placed, 10,000 square foot minimum lot size.
Can I make a correction, though? Although there's no dimensional requirement in the Form Base Code, either one downtown or there, there's still limitations that are set by unit, a minimum 10 foot off the road, you need minimum 90, you can have maximum 90 foot open space, so while there's no, there's nothing there in numbers, there are setback requirements that have to be met in order to do anything in these Form Base Code areas.
Yeah, right, and so
Well, you said that there was no, you could put everything lot line to lot line.
But, so if you look at 3.5.8, where it says, calculating the number of units in the development approved through site plan review, which is what we are, right? And the last paragraph says, unit count calculation. To determine the base maximum number of allowable residential dwelling units on the site, divide the net area calculated above, and it talks about deducting wetlands and whatnot, but take the net area calculated above by the minimum lot, by the minimum lot area applicable to the zoning district. We don't have that in Form Base Code, so you can't make that calculation. So how do you determine? You, you've got lot coverage, you've got the size lot, you've
How do you determine the unit size by?
You can't determine
This doesn't apply, 3.5.8 doesn't apply.
Well, respectfully, I disagree, you can't determine how many units you can get in the Form Base Code area based on a minimum lot size requirement. Now, I, I acknowledge, and that's why I said I acknowledge that that's what your position is and the town council's position is, is why we submitted the number of units we'd get at 750 square feet. Right? So, so we've done that, and now, you know, we're asking you to write that. I get, I heard what you said.
So I, I, I agree with you to the point, I think we're at a point now that unless one of my colleagues is going to introduce a new angle to this argument, I, I, I think we really need to push this to, to action this evening and, and, and get closure one way or the other.
I think we should also let Julie speak on this as well.
Of course.
I know Julie is not voting on this, but I feel, as a board, she's she, she's not voting on this issue because this was, but she has, I think her opinion is very important as well.
Thank you.
I've said it at a prior meeting, but I do believe after seeing this happen in prior meetings, prior plans, the way we do things as a board is that this is a town meeting decision, and that this is a large number, and it's not, we do waivers as part of plans often, and this, to me, doesn't fall within anything that I'm comfortable voting for.
So, as they're, you know, so intertwined, right? So if we can't get beyond the, the unit size, then, you know, whether or not you would give us the bonus is, is a material, so, so you, so the board's saying that you, you wouldn't consider the size reduction because it's too large a number. The, the request, the number of requests for reduction is too large, and so it doesn't matter
The number of units you're requesting a reduction, a size reduction on, is too large. Is that what you're trying, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to, we're, we're getting down, we're down in the weeds, I want to make sure we stay in the weeds.
But that's what I understand the board to say, is that you're just asking for too many reductions, not that we don't like it, not that we don't agree they should be smaller, but you're just asking for too much.
In my mind, this wouldn't be an exercise in discretion, this would be an outright disregard of what town meeting established, and that's why it's a line I personally would not want to cross.
Yeah, but it doesn't say it limits you to a percentage of, of waiver, you can only waive up to 50% if
I recognize that.
And if town meeting wanted to do that, they would have done it, they would have put the language in, this is no different than any other law in the state of Massachusetts. But can I ask, I'll ask for a brief recess so I can go on and talk to my client?
I will, yeah, I will do that, we, I grant a recess, we'll meet at 5 after the hour, is that sufficient?
Yeah, that'll do it, thank you.
We will now resume the meeting.
I hate to be a stickler, but do we have to wait till 7:05?
No.
Is this, this is not on Zoom?
Can I make a motion to resume the meeting?
Do we need a motion to resume?
No, I'm kidding.
No.
See the smile on, on the attorney
I, I assume that since everyone, all, all applicable parties are present, I, I felt that we were ready to go, so.
So
We are resuming, yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think it's extremely unfortunate that, you know, this issue is a huge impediment for this development, and I think that we very might well not be able to move forward. What I would ask, however, is that we continue this to the next meeting so that we can have an appropriate team meeting and discuss it, but I'm, I'm being honest with you when I say that this position is probably going to cause us to ask that we withdraw without prejudice, but I'm not making that determination tonight, I'd ask that we continue it to the next meeting, which I think
The next one is the 24th.
And then we'll, we'll have an answer, but I, I'm truly disappointed, but
Yes, Nathan?
I think this is insufficient to demonstrate where we're moving from. We've talked, I'd like to see the numbers, as Charlie said, so we know where we're, what we're waiving. I don't know if it's 60%, but anyway, you know, I think, I think it's worth the effort because this is, let's make 2 points, 1, West Main Street, we want an anchor, I want an anchor project there. I don't know if this is it. But the second is, I, I am grateful to have a debate, because if you came in under the bylaw, there'd be no debate. So I really welcome the, the back and forth, because this is what helps us better develop the bylaw and go to, even maybe go to town meeting for more improvements. So, thank you.
So, Tom, I just want a clarification, you've asked us to, for continuance to the next meeting. I ask in return, though, that we've, we've settled this issue about the unit size. I don't want it to come back in 2 weeks, and we're back in the same, hearing the same circular arguments. If that's what you're asking, I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a vote tonight, because I want, I, I, I want things to move, we've been deliberating for months and months, and we need action and understanding and clarity.
Well, so what I'm hearing tonight is that I'm not going to get at least 3 out of 4 votes on the, on the unit size, so I'm simply asking that the public hearing on site plan review, which is what we're talking about, that we now continue it to the next meeting, which would be the ordinary course if some other issue came up. I'm not going to come back and make the argument because you made it clear.
Okay.
And so really, for, for the applicant, what it's going to come down to is, do we ask that we withdraw, or can we do something else? I don't think there's anything else we can do, but I don't want to make that decision here tonight, because I need to discuss
Fair enough, I just wanted to clarify what's, what remains in the table and what doesn't. I just wanted to have that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got a motion.
Oh, we need a motion, we need a motion for continuance, I'm so sorry.
Move to continue. 201, 205 West Main Street, map 32, parcels 14 and 15, site plan special permit, Aqua Fort Overlake District, and strong water management permit, applicant DMG Investments LLC, continued from 7/11/23, 8/23, 8/22, 23/9/12, 23/9/26, 23/2/10/24, 23.
Wow, seconded.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous.
And if Danny needs anything from me tomorrow, we got an extension, I'll get it to you, Danny. Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. You didn't think I could do that, did you?
You an auctioneer?
Impressive.
I You dabbled in it?
I tolerate your timing skills there.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have representatives of 27, 29 Harvard? Do you have anyone with, with, Tom is with you, right?
Tom, yes.
Tom, do you need a, a minute to breathe here, or?
No, I think he's got most of the heavy lifting on this one.
Okay. So
You want to trade ties, Tom?
So next item up, we have 27 and 29 Harvard Road, site plan special permit, and the applicant, of course, from 29 Harvard Road LLC. Motion open, right?
Yeah, we have to move to open a public hearing.
Yeah, we have to move to open a public hearing. For twenty-seven, twenty-nine Harvard Road, map thirty-five, parcels twenty-one and twenty-two, site plan special permit, air zoning bylaw six point two, applicant twenty-nine Harvard Road LLC.
Bless you, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Dan, do you have a thing to put up on the screen or do you want?
While you're doing that, I just want to set expectations. I think our expectations for this media, for this part, portion of the hearing is to hear the applicant just discuss the nature of their plan and for us to ask questions thereof.
Sure.
And I don't expect we're going to be able to get to any extensive formal deliberation this evening, but I think it's, this evening is a perfect opportunity for you to present and for us to ask you questions.
Okay.
The pastor said no one knows, but everyone has in their phone.
I haven't, I haven't saved it.
Does anybody remember anything anymore?
You from? Actually, Bonnie did come up with the pastor the other night that she totally didn't think she knew. It's her first time out. Cool. That's why I married a younger woman.
There you go. Got it.
I'll never see that, okay?
Jeff, these are, is this a reason why we don't turn on the back monitor anymore?
It goes off when you don't use it.
Because it just means I have to, if it's easy, if it's easy, great. If it's not, forget about it.
Now, it's difficult for you to see from there, so hold on.
Hold a remote. Remote's up there.
Is there?
No.
Come on.
Oh, great, thank you.
I know where the button is. Thanks, Barry.
Makes my life a little easier. Thank you, sir.
That's the challenge of that seat, it can't seat behind you.
I'm working on it.
Not the only challenge.
Get mirrors. I'm sorry, Cal, you got the, you have the floor. By the way, do we need green cards? Are you upset?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Good evening, for the record, my name's Cal Goldsmith from Goldsmith Preston Ringwall. We're here for a site plan review and special permit public hearing for twenty-seven, twenty-nine Air Road and Harvard Road and Air. And the site, the overall site is in the upper right-hand corner of the plan. I'm circling right here. The parcels we're talking about is this parcel here and then this parcel encompassing everything else. You'll notice that there is a line here. I'd tell you what it was if I could read it.
Hundred foot buffer zone.
You'll have to read for me, Ken. A hundred foot buffer zone, and there's a two hundred foot riverfront running across here. Bowers Brook is down here. A good portion of the site is encompassed in the Bowers Brook area. The area of the site we're talking about is in this area right here. And now I'll go to the larger scale drawing so we can talk about that. And this one, you can see clearly, the riverfront, and this is the edge of Wetlands, a buffer zone coming across here. So largely, we're outside of the buffer zone, exception of a little bit right here. And in this upper corner, we are within, the western part of the site is within the two hundred foot riverfront, above the outer section of that. These two parcels are currently owned by the same person, same entity rather, and so we are joining them effectively in this application. Not to do so would have given rise to some, some setback issues from the building.
So are you gonna, sorry, not to interrupt, so you're gonna eventually do like an eighty-one X? Or are you gonna leave them just separate?
At this point, separate, but it's entirely possible it could be joined at some point. I think if there's any further, any redevelopment of this parcel, that would happen, but probably not right at the moment. The building in question is right here, and it's basically divided in half this way. The front of the building is Ted's Honey Hut, which is a small retail establishment selling, as you might expect, honey. The back is Flag Welding. A single person, John Flag, works in there, does welding. Most of the welding he does is off-site, but he does do some small welding on, in here. He, Ted had, had appined that this was kind of a craft thing that was allowed, and, and building inspector disagreed and said this is considered enclosed manufacturing, which in the general business district requires a special permit, which is the subject of our special permit. It's also a change of use, which is what spurred the site plan approval. We're not talking about any improvement on the site, any change to the parking, with the exception of down in here adding four wheel stops. Because the, the parking right now here, and it, we'll get back to this, but the idea now is to remove this parking, although leave the pavement there, but take out the striping, move the four parking spaces down here because these parking spaces don't conform with respect to side setbacks or front of the, or front lot line where this one actually goes over the lot line. We could have fixed that, but it was decided that in order to, to meet the side setbacks, it's better to relocate those parking spaces here. And we need to designate those, this is a gravel parking area, so painting lines on the gravel is not going to be very useful. So we're designating those four spaces per the bylaw with wheel stops, which don't require any excavation or any disturbance at all, you just place them on the ground. So that, we would relocate those four parking spaces here. But in the comments that we saw, there was a discussion about handicap, needing to provide handicap space. Obviously, this is not where you'd want to put a handicap space. I did look at this with respect to putting a handicap space up here. You'd want to do it on this pavement, close to the building. Doesn't make any sense anywhere else. And I put a scale from the building corner here to the lot line here, and that is about forty-seven feet. So we need to be ten feet off of the lot line. The parking area is eighteen feet. Parking space is eighteen feet, and we need to be five feet off the building, which leaves, which leaves us a fourteen foot aisle. If we make this a one-way in, and then this would be the one-way out, we could in fact comply with the bylaw because an aisle for one way with four fewer parking spaces is minimum is ten feet, with five or, I think five to fifteen or twenty is, is twelve feet. We have fourteen feet. Fourteen feet at the widest right here. It's going to get a little smaller as we work back, but I would, I would propose we put the handicap space right up front. This building actually extends all the way out to here, so we could be on the side of this building and still be in here somewhere, which would keep us from, it would give us the best, the widest access way and keep us off this corner of the building.
If I may, excuse me, Mr. Chair. So what happens is, the lot line itself is actually not right on the edge of the roadway. That's, the line that's shown at the front.
Yeah, no, the road is out here.
So the canopy at the front of the building is actually touching the front lot line, almost?
Canopy of the front building is actually over the lot line.
Got it, okay. I just want, I'm just knowing the property fairly well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to do apples to apples.
It actually extends over the property line.
That's okay, yeah.
As does the landscaping in front of it.
Not going to worry about that right now, but thank you.
Yeah.
Because, because you, you can't put parking in front of the front end of the building. This, this, it's a, it's a convoluted set of rules you have to follow.
It is.
It sounds like that's going to work.
We did ask the building inspector in our discussions about this canopy, does it contain part of the building? And he said, yes, it does. So that gives us the latitude to be able to put a handicap space somewhere in this area here and still have a decent, we might even be able to get the eighteen foot two-way aisle out of it, but if, it'll be close. So that would satisfy the, the requirement for the handicap space, which means we would, well, we could eliminate, you have, if your four spaces are under, you need a ten-foot aisle. If you go to five spaces, you need a twelve-foot aisle. We're going to have more than that anyway, so we could leave these four spaces intact and just add a handicap space up here.
Just, you mentioned that the handicap space might be eighteen feet deep, I'm presuming you said?
Yes, eight feet. It's, it's got to be van accessible, so it's an eight-foot wide space with an eight-foot wide hatched area next to it.
Okay, sixteen feet then, basically.
Right. And the parking, and I think the ADA defers to the depth of parking for the underlying requirements in the zoning, and it's eighteen feet.
And Cal, just what would you do? What do you do with the space, the ten-foot space from the lot line to the edge of the striping for the new handicap space? Like hash it out so no one's going to park on it? Because someone's going to, I'm just going to pull in and park next to the fence.
Well, I mean, realistically, if we painted all these lines out and they went away, where do you think people are going to park?
They're going to park there, ain't it?
Right.
Yeah.
But this is about getting this plan to comply with the bylaw requirements.
And it's an unmanned business, there's nobody there to...
To tell them, get around back and park out back.
Yeah. People pull up, drop their money in, grab their honey and leave.
I think the important thing is you got a handicap accessible space there.
Yeah, maybe some signage of no parking along this fence.
Something.
Something to deter people?
That won't deter them.
But, something.
And, and Cal, just for clarification, forgive me if I'm a little slow here. When we're saying it's just a change of use, it's the two uses, it's the honey hut and then the welding?
Yes.
Those are the two businesses you're referring to?
Yeah, and, and actually, previously, it was, it was a gas station for years since the fifties.
Yeah, I remember.
And they did have a retail component to it, so I question whether the retail is actually a change of use. I think it's...
There's a third use here too.
But that's what I wanted to get to, is that you mentioned two, but I also believe there's a third component there.
So the third use, right, is the commercial, we've designated a gravel area here as a commercial parking. Now, that's been going on informally for as long as this has been here, I think. In one form or another, there's been trucks parking here before and there. And they used to use this as a turnaround. A lot of times, this was a turnaround for the, the trucks to come in, turn around, and then come back out and pump their diesel on the side of the building and then head out. So the question arose, do we need to designate formal parking spaces in here? We've got a variety of trucks and cars and trailers parked in here now, and it's, it's got to be a parking area, can't be a storage area, it's got to be a parking area because that's the allowed use in this, in this zone, in general business. We could certainly do something like this and put in wheel stops. I think it's going to be foolish because it's not going to really define a space that anybody's going to pay any attention to because they're, when they, where they have room, they're going to put their trailer or their truck or their, whatever it is they want to store back here.
What's currently being stored back there? Because, just from what, from seeing from the road?
So John Flag owns a bunch of Land Rovers.
Yeah.
Collects them. So he's got like three Land Rovers here.
Disco mostly.
Couple other people have cars there. There's trailers, couple of trailers, a boat. John Flag welded a giant dragon on a trailer that he's got stored there, that I imagine he takes out on Halloween. I'm just guessing. That kind of stuff. Their vehicles, they're all, for the most part, they're all...
So, so there's not like storage containers or anything back there?
No, no.
Aren't there some tractor, aren't there some trailer units back there?
There's some trailer units, yeah. But everything, everything that's there is on wheels, it's parked. To my record, I didn't do a detailed...
Has he submitted for a business certificate for that use yet?
So Teddy's Honey Hut has applied for their business certificate.
Yeah, I know Teddy's and Flags did, but the, the commercial parking has not.
I, I don't know, I'll ask him, but I...
Yeah, because I checked with the town clerk.
Yeah. It probably just never occurred to him to do that, but yeah.
But we will. I mean, I, if he asks to apply, we'll, and I'll tell him that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that he, he knows he also needs to apply for that one.
So I, so in terms of the marketing parking spaces back here, it seems kind of counterproductive. I mean, I know that they've got different things, different sizes, parked different ways back there. We could come up with something, but it's going to be kind of like this area. It's going to be, we show you a bunch of wheel stops, complies with the bylaw, nobody pays any attention to it, but...
So the, the only thing is just because of what's being stored back there, it just kind of all like all over the place?
Yeah.
And that's kind of like the issue here, it's just, I don't want to say it's, it's not organized.
It's not organized.
The kids today would say it's random.
Yes.
As far as random, I mean, all the line mails. Drag in a row right behind the other one. There's some organization to it. If you'd act a Teddy, he'd tell you it's very organized.
Dragon or not.
His idea of organization and, and ours might be different.
Valid. It's similar to his idea of compliance versus our idea of compliance.
Teddy's old school.
Let's see, that's the two hundred foot riverfront going vertically?
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not proposing, we're not proposing any change to this. This, and the history of this is, because they were gas stations before Teddy bought it, there was a requirement that all the gas stations be, all the gas tanks be removed and that they do a survey and make sure that there's no contamination and, and I don't think there was, but if there was, it was removed. And then they actually brought conservation commission out at the time to look at this, and they appined that there was no violation of, of the wetland bylaws, which was a while ago. And...
That's a different, I did look at, that's different. I'd have to verify that because there was a violation on site, and I don't think it was for that.
Right. They gave Teddy a clean bill of health by the time they were all done talking about it anyways.
But if he's parking in Land Rovers and stuff like that out there, that could leak, isn't that a major potential hazard that wasn't even there before?
This was something that I did raise to you guys when, when we met, was, you know, because the Aquafer district, you know, the Aquafer Protection District is right here in the back, your, the edge of your water, if anything were to get into that area, it would automatically go into the well protecting area, which is why when we had discussed, you would say, you said you were going to try to...
Aquafer Protection District's quite a ways away. So anything that's in the gravel here is not automatically going to get out there. It's got a long ways to go.
I, I agree with you on that, but I'm saying if something were to get into that water, then it's, it's, it's going.
I think if there was, yeah, it's a B E F though.
Yeah, and, and I agree. And that's why when we had, when we talked about it, you said you were going to try to pull out as much as you could out of that two hundred.
And that's something we can talk with Teddy about. I mean...
I mean, isn't there sufficient room to, I guess, the east side of the, of that line?
In this area here? It'd be, I mean, understand it's a two hundred foot riverfront line, it's not the Aquafer line.
Well, the two hundred foot riverfront is even worse. You know, you're not allowed to have any development within the two hundred foot, you're not allowed to, unless you have approvals, this...
Right.
So it's actually more stringent, so I don't know if you want to make that argument.
But this is not a development. We're talking about an existing use that's been here for years and years and years.
That doesn't...
He's only owned it for a few years.
Well, before him, it was other people parking back there, they were parking with a trailer truck.
And it was not conforming prior to his ownership.
Right.
He's gotten a lot of, he's had, there's been a great deal of lenience in order to get this rezoned and other things, and we're still in a position where we don't have any compliance at all in many areas, so... Don't mean to cut you off there. No, that's fine. I just want to make this clear. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like Cal to be able to finish his presentation, allow him to do that, and then I would like the, the town planner to respond with, with this report, and then we can ask questions all the way around. So please continue, Cal.
Okay, so that's basically the long and the short of it. I mean, we're not proposing any change to this parking area, there hasn't been any work in it, it's just a matter of utilizing the existing parking area for, for outside storage, vehicle storage. This is the, the welding shop. I know the building inspector talked about a review of a report that was submitted. I'm not knowledgeable on that, the requirement for the building and piece of that, so we have to defer to the building inspector and his review of that report that was submitted at his request. I don't see anything in the comments. I don't see anything in the comments, the private septic system, I think.
Did you get it finished?
Teddy submitted that to the board of health, so that's all squared away. I don't know anything about the status of the outstanding fines.
I think of those fines, if I may, Mr. Chair, is that the fines that Charlie had assessed? I don't think there was, actually any fines assessed, there was a ticket that was issued that has been filed with the district court and we're waiting for hearing on that, so. But I don't think that really has any impact on site plan approval.
No, I agree with you that the fines don't have, but that is something, you have stated that it was appealed.
Yeah.
Okay, we're waiting on record, we're waiting on something from showing that it was appealed, we have not seen anything yet.
Did I send you a copy of it? So there was no requirement of service on the applicant, you filed with the district court, we did that and the district court was there, and then they notify everybody? I'm guessing, because I do work in there on other matters, that we're probably months away from hearing, but.
Yeah, and we understand that, I just, we haven't received anything yet, that's all.
Continuing on, the fire department wants an inspection, which is between Flag and Fire Department.
That's a hot shot inspection, I bet.
Yeah, okay.
I was just looking to see if there are any comments, thank you for bringing that up. So other than that, I think we've talked about everything on here. So the only issue would be restriping this to show a handicap space here, which is a thing that we haven't shown in this plan. And hopefully we could do that in such a way that we still maintain an eighteen-foot aisle width, so we can have two-way, well, it doesn't make this a one-way. But if we had to, we could do that.
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Please, of course, Joe.
I don't know the full story behind this and I'm not sure, Calvin, you can actually respond to it, so don't worry about it, you know the answer. But the signage on that property is not compliant with the sign by law, from what I understand?
Along a couple of different vectors. I'm not 100% sure on that, I know that there was a sign permit that was submitted.
Okay.
And that Charlie has not done the final sign-off on it yet.
Okay.
But I know there was something.
So if they're also, because that was another issue, septic was outstanding, sign was outstanding, and then the layout was outstanding also.
If he submits on the Charlie, then it's.
That's why I'm not asking you to opine on it, I just wanna make sure.
That's kinda, I think that's the whole picture of what's been going on on this piece of property since we changed the zoning. Mr. District can remember something else, but.
Well, through the chair, I'm pretty sure they went to the zoning board of appeals on the sign already, because I remember seeing some kinda recording that they went there and got a result. They gave him permission to leave his name on several sections of canopy, more than is allowed under the sign, so he's got that covered.
Okay, thank you.
You good, Cal?
I am.
Okay, so what I'd like to do with the colleague's permission, I'd like to turn it over to Danny to talk about some of the points and particular emphasis are what are the germane issues that might remain as obstacles or challenges or things that need to be addressed before we can come to an agreement through a deliberation?
So a couple of the things were actually raised by Cal. So the first one was, you know, discussion of the designated gravel commercial parking area. You know, figuring out exactly where things are being stored, what's being stored and location, demarcating, showing parking spaces, but that's just, you know, what Charlie and I feel need to be demarcated out there, as they're doing with the other ones up front.
So are you saying you want a demarcated parking space?
Yes, they have vehicles out there, those should be parked in certain parking spaces as well. It's a parking lot, it's a parking area, you know, it's not a storage area. I think this is kind of a difference.
So again, it would just be wheel stops, basically?
The business certificate, which I have just raised about the commercial, I know Flag and Ted's Honey Hut have submitted for those and received them, so it's just the commercial parking area that needs it. Another item that was still open was under site plan, under our site plan review regulations, section four C8, the location, description and proposed containment of any hazardous materials to be located or stored on site in amounts greater than those associated with normal household use. Flag welding, I'd assume they have hazardous materials as it is a welding shop.
They have gases, but I'm not sure that's considered hazardous, is it?
I just need some sort of a list from the owner of any hazardous materials that he has that is more than the normal household use.
Can I just, did you?
Yes.
When the fire department does their inspection for the process of flag welding, it's gonna generate that result that you're looking for. The fire department's gonna have him list everything, so just keep that in mind.
Okay, yeah, because it's just one of the requirements under our.
The fire department, are they saying in their comments that they haven't done an inspection?
They have not.
Why don't they just try and do an inspection?
I don't think anybody's asked them to do an inspection.
Correct.
You have to make a request for the first inspection and then annually the fire department goes and reminds you that it's coming.
And it is for hot shops. And typically that happens also when a change of use.
I've reserved my comment.
Yes. We have a compliance issue.
Trying to say, a person can have a welding shop, he decides not to ask for.
He was supposed to have gotten it when he changed the use, because that's when you get your occupancy permit, you get your inspections, that's when it should have been done, but that's when it didn't happen. Because they's never received COs or anything.
Fire prevention officer who goes around the town all the time with inspections.
So just to clarify for me, who initiates the fire inspection?
So it's a challenge.
The applicant, in this case, at change of use, the applicant's responsibility was to request the inspection? I'm just trying to get that.
Because they never received COs.
Okay, I just wanted to know who is actually doing what.
That's what I was trying to.
Hand in glove with your certificate for business, certificate of occupancy, you have to comply with all the local regulations. Once you comply, until you no longer run the business, it becomes an annual thing and the fire department remembers because it pops up every year, it's a permitting.
They have a whole list of people they do.
Yeah.
And they'll have to comply with all of the other regulations in town, separate and apart from site plan.
And the way it happens in the shop, they call me on the phone and say, we'd like to schedule this, and I look at the floor manager and say, why did you schedule it? He goes, oh, I forgot, well, it's on the schedule, it's just gotta get done.
Okay, good, and what was your fourth one, Danny?
So the applicant states that they haven't submitted business hours of operations, that's required under our application. They just say that while both businesses do not have set hours of operation, each business is typically open only within typical business hours, Monday through Friday, with reduced, if any, hours on the weekend.
I kinda thought that.
It's an honor system for the Honey Hut? And Mr. Flag is there as needed for his work?
Yeah, I mean, you could say he's open from nine to five or seven to four or whatever, and he'd go there three days in a row and he wouldn't be there at 10 o'clock in the morning, because he's off doing welding someplace.
This business use has generated no employment?
There's nobody else there right now, and Teddy, there's nobody there for the most part.
And so the commercial parking, who's? Is it? I guess one of my questions for that on the commercial, is it just for those two uses they're using it? Or?
No, I think Teddy's got friends in town that wanna park a truck or a car or a boat or something, and he lets them park. I think that's, I don't think he actively, he puts on a sign, but other than that, you gotta come to him and find him and catch him. It's not a booming business.
I think that the thing with the business hours, I just think from a common sense point of view, it's addressing the concern that, say for instance, Mr. Flag, that he's not doing it in hours that would discomfort the abutters. So it's not like we want them to say, you're gonna be here at these times, we recognize the flexibility with the Honey Hut self-serve and Mr. Flag as needed, but I think that what we're looking for is an assurance that there are hours when he conspicuously won't be working there. Do you know what I'm getting at? So people could be assured that.
I do.
There are limits.
I would point out that a lot that's included in this, nobody there, cemetery, nobody there.
They're pretty quiet.
There, the guy across the street is a booming, busy.
That's not a great decision.
I don't see that, if he was there welding at six in the morning, I don't think anybody's gonna even know it.
Julie made a good point.
I mean, Stratton Hill's gonna be before us and I could talk to you about which neighbor lives where, but that's not how we're choosing what house goes where. So it's not his Google hours in which he is gonna be able to tell me as an internet surfer when I can find Mr. Flag. It is so we have the hours of operation on record for the business permit.
I don't think it's a problem.
I don't think so.
Gas stations 24/7, I don't think they're gonna be 24/7.
I would bash the town so sound out.
Just, yeah, right, just give us some, that's all. Please, thank you.
Our business hours enforcement officer will not be there on the first day of the month.
I was just trying to give you the most accurate.
I understand, we got it, I understand. So where are we with this? What I would hope is that we would, that come the next meeting, that you would be able to address these four concerns, right?
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Yes, please, I'm not shutting the discussion down, I'm just saying where we are now, I'm not shutting it down, I'm just kinda summarizing where we are at the moment, please.
Like one of our residents, I'm gonna stir the pot for a moment.
Please do.
I am not, I can't, in thinking about the commercial parking area.
Yeah.
I would insist that it be, personally, I would insist that it be delineated. I would not wanna see bump stops go in there because they're gonna get moved, they're gonna get plowed away, they're gonna get pushed all over the place, it's an insufficient way of marking the area. However, we have to have the area marked so it doesn't grow and stuff like that. Is there, I don't know the answer to this, and maybe the building inspector, who's unfortunately not here, can answer it. Is there not build a fence, but are there posts, is there some way to delineate that area so that upon an inspection by a town employee, without, I mean, you're talking about putting sixty.
Across it if you want.
You're talking about putting sixty or eighty of those rubber bump stops in or concrete bump stops in, they're gonna get pushed around.
I don't know about that many, but yeah.
But you know what I'm saying, well, I don't know how big it is, but.
We could put posts in that would delineate an aisle, and then you might get three cars parked behind each other in an aisle.
Exactly.
In an aisle.
Just, the gravel area exists as it does now, it's not being kept up, it's going to change over time. I would say some way, and I don't, we can't answer the question at the table, but I would hope that the, I'm hoping maybe we could be a little bit open to some creativity on, get it delineated in such a way that we're not building structures back there or putting structures back there that will get pushed into the wetland area, or something like that. It's just a concern I have. Yeah, and so the actual bylaw, and this is why, I mean, Cal's using the wheel stops. It says all required parking spaces shall be marked by painted lines, curbs or other means that indicate individual spaces. Yeah, exactly, and I understand, I used the word random, I wasn't being unkind, I hope, but however he's got it planted in his mind, maybe that there can be some way of delineating it. And I solved this problem in Reading a similar way, we granite posts, because it was a nice neighborhood, but.
I know this is.
It was years ago.
I know this is kind of a soft thing that's not in stone, but the way I think about the site is, it's very close to the circle, it's very visible, I mean, everyone sees it. And I think that I would ask the applicant to be sensitive to the overall condition of the site reflect well in a town. And I think that we're talking about delineating the commercial space, et cetera. I think a large part of that is that when people drive by, they get the sense this is an orderly business and an orderly town, it reflects well, it looks good. And without a sense of, I don't, not looking like a chaotic dumping ground based on the whim of the moment. You know, if this goes here, because, well, why not, we got room here. I think that's, I can't put words in everyone else's mouth, that's what they're thinking, but that's certainly on my mind. And I know that this doesn't fit, and I can't point to a specific bylaw, et cetera, but I do know that part of authority is, you know, some aesthetic concern, I would just ask you, please take that in consideration. The kind of pride that this would reflect in the town is all, and please.
Mr. Chair, not to diminish what you said.
Please.
They planted and grew sunflowers there this summer, to be honest with you, it was awesome. There's an old garden plot that somebody cast a bunch of sunflower seeds into and it's awesome. So it does have, you know, no reason we can't have that.
Just to think about. I especially welcome any comments or anything that could help the applicant in preparing for the next meeting. Anything else that we're thinking, Nathan, please?
Well, I understand, I understand what the application's for and what this, but the narrative, we've talked about, what's not, I think explicitly called out the narrative, this is to allow the welding shop. So I would just be more clear that you want to allow not only a welding shop, but you want to, or at least there seems to even be some contention whether the commercial partner, yes, parking and storage is.
I don't think it can.
They all have a specific branding.
Storage is not allowed?
Yeah, it's not storage, it's commercial parking, is the allowed use.
Okay.
But is it?
I know. I know, when you put a trick. Yeah, Julie.
No, Nathan doesn't fit.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nathan finished, then Julie, I apologize.
No, it's a similar question, I'll let you go first.
So I would just, the narrative is a long narrative, I think it just needs to be tightened up to say, this, we want to apply for a permit, and then list the permits that you want to apply for. Namely, enclosed fabrication, welding, and then commercial parking?
And so, well, so it's allowed use, so it's site plan review, so it's not, okay, and then a special use is just the welding?
That's a by right, this is the commercial parking.
Okay, okay, that's why it's not in. That's.
Good question.
I'm not still following, so they don't have a business certificate for commercial parking, but they do have it by right, they just don't have their business certificate to rightfully do so. So we can discuss this because by right, they are commercially parking there for long periods of time.
It's an allowed use, yes.
So we can discuss that even though it's not?
They have not applied for the certificate.
Right.
So the certificate is through the town clerk?
Yes.
The site plan review will encompass it all, so that's why.
Why we still can talk about it, even though they're not in compliance. Okay.
Just like, you know, someone could buy right in certain areas, they can buy right, they could build, but they still have to go through a process.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So on the commercial parking, it sounds like the concern isn't really where, we talked a lot about where these things are parked, I don't really think that's the big concern, except that it's messy and you wanna present well at the entrance to the town. It's, to me, it sounded like the larger concern is we don't want to see that sensitive area grow. It'd be even nicer if it shrunk back to the 200-foot, I don't know if that's possible. So it would seem that delineating the extent of where business is allowed would be more important than trying to mark where aisles should be.
Interesting point, yes, Tom.
I think the unigane thing about this project is that this already all exists. And I know that the bylaw talks about minor site plan, which we don't have any provision for minor site plan. So if there's no construction going on down there, the trigger is the change of use.
And so one comment also that was, Conservation raised that this is 200-foot riverfront, and I understand that it was already existing prior, but Concom believes that an RDA or an NOI should be submitted for.
Yeah, we agree with that, no, because we're not making any disturbance, we're not doing anything.
I agree, but that doesn't mean that the use that was previously already being used was not proper.
Right.
And I'm not saying it's you guys who are making it an elite, you know, a non-conforming use, you know, that you have, how do I explain this? It was pre-existing, but that you guys own it, so now I think you have to make it conform. And through Conservation, I believe you have to submit an RDA or an NOI because you're within the 200-foot riverfront.
So whether it's allowed use or not, or was pre-existing, the riverfront act went into effect in 1996. So if you were doing this parking prior to 1996, after that, when the rivers act came to effect, when that 200-foot riverfront became effective, then you would have had to have filed. If you were doing it after 96, the riverfront act was in effect and you still would have filed. So we wouldn't need a filing no matter what, whether prior to 96 or after 96, because that parking was there before the act and after, or after the act.
So I think that's a matter we'll have to take up with the Conservation.
Yeah, it's just something I wanted to raise, because it is one of our comments from the department.
But it is, that's the jurisdiction of Conservation.
It is the jurisdiction of Conservation, but it was also something that I think Nathan raised about possibly shrinking that area, the designated commercial parking area.
It's an interest, for sure. One last civil engineering question.
Please, lay it on us.
Okay, this magnetic nail, is that what it is, mag nail?
Yeah.
Is that permanent, is that like, is that a reference that? Is that like, is that a reference that will be there through years of multiple seasons?
I don't think it's set as an iron pin.
It's in a 20-inch pine.
I think that's a, yeah. So that's a benchmark.
Yeah, it's a benchmark for.
It's something we refer to while we're doing the job. It's going to disappear, it's going to get grown over.
Yeah, okay. I'm just looking to see if there's anything existing that can mark, you know, that if somebody comes out and does a survey, you can see where the extent of use was and.
Yeah, no, that's just for survey elevation.
Yeah, just so while we're doing the work.
Yeah.
But it's not long-term. It's not a permanent boundary mark. I'm just going to look and see if there are any noted on here.
I don't think so.
There's a benchmark number two, chiseling the southeast corner of concrete, but that's not, I don't see anything shown as.
There's one on the upper corner of the marker, it's chiseled concrete also.
And that's not a requirement. Sometimes they have us do it, but it's not a requirement.
Matt, did you have any questions that you wanted to ask, or?
So, do you want to review this? The DPW director, so I just looked at this a few hours ago. So pardon my ignorance.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to ask.
I think if this does have to go through conservation, my first thought, when you had that big gravel lot right in the riverfront area, it was a bit of a bummer. I understand it's an existing situation, so there's only so much we can force, but Nathan's idea I think is excellent. Possibly if that can be shrunk, can you have that reviewed, I think, I'll wait.
Talk to our client.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. That would be good.
I mean, there is, I understand that, you know, this is being used.
Watch out, watch out, watch out. It's a touchscreen, it's a touchscreen.
You're such a powerful guy.
So I know that area is being used currently as it is now, but pulling it out this way, you have a lot of space over here, you know? There's, that's not being used, it's currently open. When you go out there and you look, it's just gravel. So it can be pulled out.
It can, it'll be closer to the road.
It would be. I know it would be more visible.
A little bit more organized.
Everything, we're juggling a whole bunch of different parameters here.
I understand.
But we, I think that that would certainly be a gesture of goodwill.
Uh huh.
Yes. Any further questions for the, no, first, let me ask first the applicants, any further information you wish us to have this evening?
I don't believe so unless you do.
Well, on the special permit, if you want me to take you through the special permit.
Sure.
All right, so section 3.4B says, so this is a special permit to allow the use as the, I call it the flag use, but it's that type of use. So special permit should be granted by the special permit granting authority, that's this board on its written determination that, one, adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to the site. And the bylaws is the board shall consider socio-economic or community needs which will be served by the proposal, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, adequate utilities and other public services, neighborhood character and social structures, impact of the natural environment, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. So the beneficial impact of allowing flag use by special permit would be, it allows a longtime businessman in town to continue his business in air. Flag provides a service and demand in the town and surrounding communities, as evidenced by the fact that he's been in business for a very long time in town. This use in part replaces the former uses of the site as a gas station. There will be no new construction as a result of the special permit. The site is abutted by a cemetery, the town line, and the gas station across the street. The socio-economic and community needs which will be served, already referred to, but a long-term businessman can remain in air, the services are needed, it allows the existing building and site to remain in an active use. Traffic flow and safety, it could have been talked about with the one way in, one way out, but this use is certainly much less traffic-intensive than the former gas station.
Yeah.
Utilities are adequate on the site. Harvard Road is one of the major roadways in town, so I don't think there's any question about utilities. The neighborhood character, I think, is defined by the former use of the gas station, gas station across the street, the cemetery, and I don't think there's any adverse impact by that particular use. There'll be no adverse impact on the environment as the result of this particular use, and in fact, the removal of the oil fuel tanks is certainly a big improvement down there. Fiscal impact of the town will not be adversely impacted, because the business has been in town for many years. Approval of the special permit will allow him to continue, will allow good use of the property, which will keep it, you know, on the positive end of the commercial tax law. So I think under the special permit provisions, I hope that you would agree that, you know, would meet all of those requirements.
Any questions for my board colleagues about the special permit as described by Tom?
I think he left off the part that we said we couldn't condition, how we could condition it if we felt like it. Such conditions, safeguards, limitations shall be in writing and shall be made a part of the special building permit, may include any of the following, but not limited to: screening buffers, appointed strips, or fences, or walls, a specified planning board, design installation of lighting to minimize glare, blah, blah, blah. So there's other conditions that we are allowed to put in as part of our approval.
Right. And what I'd say, though, is the special permit is for his particular use in his little box in there, it's not the whole site plan.
We understand, yes.
Doesn't say that, whatever. I've still got a couple of questions on the original job.
Please do.
We'll get back to that. So there's an interesting twist to the parking requirement, and I guess I'll ask Danny and Cal to define what this is. So the, there's a requirement that all the spaces be, have an all-weather surface area, and I don't think gravel's an all-weather surface, but maybe you guys have got a thought on that. Says each off-street parking space shall be an all-weather, comma, surfaced area, and then the dimensions, at least nine by 18. So clearly, we're talking about putting spaces where there's a gravel surface. Does, do they need to apply for a waiver for us to grant them to park on the gravel because of the specific requirement in the very first sentence of the design standards?
So I disagree with that. Gravel is an all-weather surface. It's plowable, you can drive out in the winter, you can drive on it in the rain.
Okay.
I think it's an all-weather surface. Now, if it wasn't gravel and it was loam, or.
That's different.
Well, a little bit, we.
Different story. But certainly gravel is an all-weather surface.
Yeah, I'd agree that gravel is.
Okay.
Especially with how compacted that the gravel can get. Once it gets compacted, it's.
Fifty years of truck traffic is coming.
Yeah, at that point, it's basically cement.
And actually, just for your interest, when we do drainage calculations, we take gravel road into effect that's almost as impervious as pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then the next, don't tell us at the next meeting that gravel's permeable, okay?
Well, some gravel is. My idea to be is.
That's the problem.
I was staying away from permeable discussion, guys.
But you're right, some of them are, some of the surface, some paving's impervious as well.
That's true.
Okay, so that takes care of that question. Thank you very much.
And some grass.
You were, there was a, in the application, you said you needed a waiver from a stormwater calcs. Do we need a?
Yes, well.
Stormwater permit waiver, I guess, either one.
Well, we're not changing anything, so.
Yeah, I don't think.
It's not.
So I think the way, I don't think they have to apply for it because they're not changing the, but.
I think this is an outgrowth of, I think this is an outgrowth of not having a reduced site plan requirement for change of use. This is one of those things that, when you're not changing anything about the site.
Because they don't, yeah, because they don't actually trigger any of the criteria for stormwater management. They don't trigger any of those.
Whereas if we're adding the gravel, or if we were paving over it, or if we were doing something different, then I think you would be right in asking for that.
Where did I read that? I read it someplace that they needed.
Oh. It's in the.
Town of a Stormwater Regulations, this is what applies, it's probably given.
And I'm not, I mean, it was.
Hereby requests a waiver to the required stormwater calculations, I'm reading it out of your application.
Well, because in site plan approval, it talks about stormwater calculation.
But it says, GPR hereby requests a waiver to the required stormwater calculations. I mean, it's in black and white. Are you requesting a waiver, aren't you? It's right there.
If you tell me I don't need, which I.
I'm not telling you you don't need it, I'm saying you said you need it.
And I wouldn't ask for a waiver. This is one of my young engineers.
It says hereby request. Would you like to have the lawyer read this? He determines the language there.
We'll amend the application.
We'll amend the application.
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
So you don't think we need a waiver, so you're going to amend the application to delete the fact that you're asking for a waiver. We'll buy that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Other questions regarding the other waiver requests?
Oh, I was going to make one, have one other, one other thought for the.
Go for it.
Could you make a decision on the plan, rather than say, concrete or railroad ties? Decide what you want. Just put concrete or something on it, but not one or the other. So we know what it is. Because if, he's going to take the cheapest one, and it's going to, whatever.
We don't know that. He might, he might want to.
Just put on there what you want.
He might want to put planters on.
You as a professional engineer would be the best thing to work there. That's all I'm asking.
It would be like little bee eyes.
And then would you consider the, putting signage there as well on the parking, so that we know these are the parking spaces, especially in the winter when it snows and it needs to be plowed, that they could plow those spaces out? So signage, I think, would help. But definitely something that we think is a heavily installed curb stop that would stay where it's put. My preference would be like a six-by-18-inch, you know, granite piece buried in the ground with rebound and so forth like that. Probably.
It's probably not going to happen, but yeah, okay.
Something that shows us what, you know, initiative to make sure we keep those parking spaces where you say they're going to be.
We'll ask our client what his preference is, and he'll tell us, and we'll put it on the board.
I want the engineer to specify that.
I mean, typically, how often do you see on a plan or approved equal? You see that, you approve plans with that all the time?
Yeah, but that's, if it's up to me to approve the equal, then I'll make sure it's a good equal. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
So are we good here? Because I'd like to move on to some other items on the agenda.
Yeah.
So I think we need a motion for continuance, right?
Yes. Move to continue, the 27 and 20 on Harvard Road, map 35, parcels 21 and 22, site plan and special permit, air zoning by law 6.2, applicant 29, Harvard Road LLC, to the next air planning board session on 10/24/23.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
See you in the next two weeks.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, of course, Stratton Hill. And we got a very late notice that from the applicant, that due to unforeseen circumstances, they cannot be here tonight, and they've asked us to open the meeting and continue it to the next one. So I think.
Can we move?
Yeah, please.
So move to open a hearing. Offright Road, Stratton Hill, map six, parcels 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 11 through 55, definitive subdivision and open space residential development plan, applicant Fox Metal Realty Company and Molten Construction Corp.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
Yes. When we open a hearing like this, and I could have it wrong as to whether, what type, whether it's subdivision or site plan or special permit, we, I thought in the past, we typically had the clerk read the advertisement in the paper for purposes of clarification that, you know, we were reading the actual subject of the meeting and so forth, but I don't know if we have that ability to do that tonight or not, or if we should do it or not. I mean, I know we've done it in the past, that we've read the actual language of the advertisement.
And not to jump in, but to embellish your comment, they are talking about a definitive subdivision when this actually falls underneath our OSRD.
Well, it is still a definitive subdivision.
I understand it's definitive, but I also, but we've also expanded in order to contract the size of this project, so.
I don't know.
Anyway, I mean, typically, in my experience, you don't have to read the legal notice full description, but if the board wants to do that, I, I don't.
Do we know if I have it handy?
Are we going to require the, since, so this is an open and a continuation, is what we're doing this evening, and I do want to read the letter from the attorney into the record, so that if folks see this, they can see it. And would it be friendly to say, we'll read it at the next meeting, when we open the hearing?
I'm just, it's not really that important to me, I just wanted to do it as a clerical issue. You guys remember that from the past, when we read the advertisement?
We have read them in the past, yes.
So what I'm hearing is that there's a desire to not open it, is that the idea?
No.
Oh, no, no, no.
I need to open, we need to open and continue. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We should open and continue and read into the record the letter from the attorney.
And should we make two separate motions, by the way? Open and then a separate motion?
Yes.
So what I would advise is, if we agree to vote to open, then we read that, and then we'll have the continuance. Thank you.
So it was already seconded.
It's already seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. If you would read the letter, please.
My pleasure, Mr. Chair. We received a letter from Robert L. Collins, Attorney at Law, Westford, Massachusetts, dated 10 October 2023, to the air planning board, Town Hall 1, Main Street, AR Mass, and 01432, regarding Fox Metal Realty Corporation, Molten Construction Corporation, Locusts, Stratton Hill, definitive subdivision, Wright Road. Dear Board members, personal circumstances make attendance at this evening's hearing problematic. Would the board kindly open the hearing, accept the peer review comments, and continue the hearing to the board's next meeting? This will enable us to send Green International responses to their comments, allowing us to have a meaningful discussion regarding this site at the next meeting. Kindly also consider this letter as a request of the time by which the board must complete its hearings and file a decision on this matter, be extended until November 30, 2023. Thanking the board for its time and consideration, I remain very truly yours, Robert L. Collins.
Thank you. I have a question, Danny, about accepting the review.
Yes, so we don't actually have to accept the peer review comments. The reason they stated it that way was because I had told them I was not going to accept peer review responses to the peer review comments until the planning board opened the public hearing. I wanted to make, because we don't want to accept new information, continue to accept new information prior to the public hearing being actually opened.
That's fair.
And so with the opening, then, it's really not necessary for us.
Correct. Move to continue.
So we're contradicting what he's asking us to do here. He's, he's asking, would the kind, open the hearing, comma, accept the peer review comments, and continue the hearing. So are we not accepting the peer review? Are you saying?
We don't have, we don't have.
It's automatically accepted.
Because, yes, it was already, the peer review has already been acted upon, and they've already done their peer review, so it's, it's already in the motion. It's not like West Main Street where we had to approve, you know, we did the approval and then the acceptance of all that, and it's, so we don't have to do that.
So in English, the Green International will be able to respond prior to the next meeting.
Okay, cool.
That's, that's what we need.
Just so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, so Green International has already given their.
Responses.
Their comments.
Yep.
And the applicant submitted their responses to those comments. I have not accepted those.
Got it.
Okay.
But now we can, because.
Now we can, now that we have. Okay.
Can I get a motion? Further ado, like to move to continue, the Offright Road, Stratton Hill, map six, parcels 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 11 through 55, definitive subdivision and open space residential development plan, applicant Fox Metal Realty Corp. and Molten Construction Corporation, to the 10/24/23 meeting of the Air Planning Board.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Excellent, thank you, everybody.
Remember October.
Project status updates for us today, or?
Yes, so the only project status update I have for the board on this one is for Curly Circle. So as you know, at the last meeting, we said, we said that there were going to be a couple of items that were still going to be open. DPW spoke with Peter, and there's still going to be a couple of items open past town meeting.
Oh, right.
Which are light fixtures, they have not come in yet, and I think there was like two more, but.
Actually, one of them might be the street sign with the emblem on it.
It's the street sign with the emblem. The DPW proposed that they, there's going to be an MOA agreement, so between the town and the applicant, or the developer, which we would leave the bond in place. Once that everything gets done, then at that point, they'll be able to come back for a full bond release.
Beautiful.
And this will be able to go through town meeting.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I did attend the select board meeting when they accepted the warrant, and this was a discussion between the members of the select board and Superintendent Bunsch-Galquick. And so he assured them that should they're not, should it not go forward at town meeting, either Mr. Bunsch-Galquick or Mr. Hahn will stand up and speak to the matter. It sounds to me like they've come up with an agreement to keep it moving forward, so.
Terrific.
It looks like it'll go through, it'll go to town meeting for acceptance by the town, for a vote, for acceptance by the town.
Wonderful. And then regarding the meeting minutes, have my colleagues had a chance to review the meeting minutes and prepared the vote?
Move.
I'm prepared, and I just moved the dates. Move to approve the September 12, 2023
meeting minutes. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Move to approve the September 26, 2023 here, meeting minutes. Second.
Any discussion?
I just, I can't believe I'm going to say this out loud, but the remotely, wasn't it you, Jonathan? Doesn't that come before the semicolon?
I'm sorry, what are you looking at?
Right, my, September 26? It looks like Ken is.
Ken was remote.
Ken is not. No, Jonathan was remote.
Exactly.
Oh, oh, I see what you mean. The remotely, yeah, should be on the other side of the semicolon, yeah.
Can we accept that edit?
Yes.
I don't want that to be my Ken.
Can we modify, can we modify the friendly modification with that correction? Would somebody write it down so we make sure to do it? So thank you. You got it, Heather?
John, write it down.
So with that, with that modification, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I never read that line.
What has been drawn to my attention is an item that I forgot, and I'm not sure we can vote on it, but remember Julie's appointment to the Devens Committee? I'm sorry, my fault, I blanked on that. Is that, are we?
I thought we were going to hold a little until.
Yeah, that's what I. Until. Didn't you want to get a sense of it first before you committed, or are you ready to commit?
I do feel I have a sense of it, but I had such a good sense, I missed the last meeting. So I'm sensing I didn't put it on my calendar, so.
Do you want us to hold on this for?
If you can vote on it tonight, I will proceed, but if you can't, there's no rush.
I think we can.
No, we can't. We're going to vote it next time, because it'll be on the agenda.
I will reconsider my calendar.